Welcome. Thank you for coming to the first ever Seed groundwork session. It's January 2021 and we are here to spend 90 minutes digging deeper into Module One. And before we get started, just want to welcome all of you and those of you joining us via the recording. We are recording today so that this will be preserved for posterity and also reference. But my name is John Bakura. I'm the Director of the Seed Program. And with me, not as always, with me as privilege with gratitude is my colleague, Professor Luke Burgess, author, scholar, philosopher, you know, hedge fund dropout and NYU grad. And then, of course, we also have some friends online. Willie Quado is with us. Thank you, sir, for joining us. And what we'll do here is just want to welcome you. Today, we're going to get into Module One, A Life Worth Living. But I'd like for you to think of these groundwork sessions as our small group work sessions. So hopefully you came to work. Roll your sleeves up because we're going to get our hands in the mud here. And if we could be together in person, you'd know those assembled here as colleagues who bring their knowledge and passion for learning to share and challenge each other. This group gathers to collaborate, to share best practices and challenge each other to not only improve how we deliver the seed material, but also to challenge the seed material itself to improve. We'll begin with a prayer and then we'll get our hands in the mud and know that this work will bear great fruit in the lives of our students and ourselves. So we'll begin in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Come, Holy Spirit, fill the hearts of your faithful and kindle in them the fire of your love. Send forth your spirit and they shall be created and you will renew the face of the earth. Lord, by the light of the Holy Spirit, you have taught the hearts of your faithful. In the same spirit, help us to relish what is right and always rejoice in your consolation. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Ah, that's nice. So a couple of ground rules for these groundwork sessions. One, teachers can be good students. In groundwork sessions, we are all students. Working for CUA does not make you an expert at anything. Starting, running, selling, closing, or failing at business does not make you an expert entrepreneur. Seed is a collaborative effort and we need your help. For example, you'll see that we've included connections to the Catholic social teachings in the material as well as the catechism of the Catholic Church. And wherever possible, we would like to find and draw more connections to the Bible, the Old Testament, the New Testament, the lives of saints, quotes by saints, expanding outside of the catechism in general. So please share in the chat or aloud anything that comes to mind as we move through. And also, we have, and I'll put this in the chat, we have created a shared document so that if anything comes to mind and you want to make a note, this is literally something that we can all go to and keep notes and we will be able to share those as we go and compile them. Through the grace of Google, our friends, they have created this wonderful way to share documents. And so I will be taking notes here at the groundwork notes for January 5th, 2021. Please feel free to join as well. And it would be awesome if you were signed into your Google account. Not required, but that at least lets us know who's doing what and where to say thank you. So today, we're going to talk about Module One. But Module One really begins in Modules Zero and 12. So some things to consider for Module One and beyond is Module Zero, something we would like for all of you to do with all of your students, whether you are leading a classroom full of students or whether you're leading some self-directed homeschool students or yourself, is we would like for them to complete the application for Catholic University of America that is specifically dedicated and created for the Seed Program. And what we'll do here is I want to share with you, first of all, the link, which is included in Module Zero. But this link allows you to, you can share that easily with your students. They can then go through the application process, which I'll share with you here in a moment. One thing I will tell you before they get started is they will need to have an email address that is unique to them. So some of you have multiple students that you're working with at home that you're leading through. And by the way, thank you to those of you that filled out the survey by name. Thank you, Jennifer Sullivan. Thank you, Susan Temple and Shannon Rayner. We really appreciate the fact that you went and filled out the pre-survey and gave us a little glimpse. And so maybe this sounds familiar to you, but here, I'll just quote, "We are a large family and our first daughter is a junior in high school this year. We are preparing her to discern her future steps in life. I'm interested in other programs that help young people discern their future in life in light of and guided by their deep, rich, and wise Catholic faith." Sound familiar? So if that's you or if you're leading any students through this, please have them navigate to that application via the link that we just shared. And again, that is in Module Zero. And also along with Module Zero, there's this very same slide deck that I'm going to walk through with you. So let me pull that up really quick. And we're just going to run through this quick slide tutorial. So that, and some of you have seen this, especially Shannon, who's among the class of 2020. So thank you, Shannon, for returning. And so here we are. The application process, it's quite simple, really. Your student that goes through it gets through automatically. There's no application fee. And what this allows us to do, it has two functions. It allows us to have like data of how many students are going through the program. It also allows us to begin the process of those who want to go through the program for concurrent credit. So we'll talk a little bit more about that later, but essentially this is the first step to getting started. Okay, so it's actually quite simple. Where you see, and let me make sure I'm recording this and it looks good here. Fit to window. Great. Okay. So they go to seed dot, this link bitterly forward slash seed underscore CUA. They put in their first name, last name, and their email address signify that they're not a robot and click submit. And what that does is it creates an email. And in this email, it looks just like the one you're seeing on the screen here. There's this giant, unique identifier link that they receive that allows them to log in and begin their application. They create a password. And I've been through the password reset process. It's basically boilerplate what you would expect and it works. That's the main thing there. Then they begin their application in earnest. So the blue button, start an application, clicking that gets them in. They want to make sure that their application at the beginning looks almost exactly like this. The first three, high school credit, okay, because there's a couple of other ones that will be available. They want to make sure and select Catholic Entrepreneurship and Design Experience. That's what SEED stands for. Again, there's a couple of others that are available there. And then what is your academic school? The Bush School of Business Non-Degree. And again, those first three, set them exactly like that. Set their citizenship status. And then for the term, now, those of you that are on either, say, a trimester or are doing this in clubs, or perhaps you're doing this as an unschooling exercise or you're using SEED for your homeschoolers to discern, approximation is okay. So if it is, say, it's January and CUA would be on the spring term, so select spring and that'll just track right along. So if you're coming in in the summertime, say, June, July, or August, that will be a summer option. And then, of course, everything from September to the end of December is the fall. So there's that. Then wherever you see the red dots, it's required information and there's not very many red dots. So moving through, gender is optional, social security number, optional. Now, permanent address, that's important because we're going to send some correspondence once we get the application process completely approved for that student. And it will also go to the parent or guardian that they select through this process. So that's important. What's great about that too is that lets that parent or guardian know, this is happening. My student just got accepted to Catholic University of America. Pretty darn cool. So home phone, all of that is required. This information will be used, as I mentioned, to send a letter. This is optional. Citizenship in this application process is optional. I think that's important to note. This information is also optional. Military history, again, appropriate selection is good, but also this is an optional piece. And there is, for me, what I chose in there was that I just am not a military veteran. And that's an option in there as well. It would let you keep right on moving. So then, on this screen for courses, now again, this is important because there are other options in there. CUA has quite a wealth of concurrent credit opportunities for high school age students, which is really amazing and a great effort by Catholic there. So make sure that you're selecting Catholic Entrepreneurship and Design Experience. And have you previously applied to Catholic U? That's important if you have to say yes, because then they can connect this application to any existing applications. And then have you previously attended Catholic U? Who knows? Maybe they have. And so if the answer is yes, please do make sure to say yes there. So then begin, so this part is kind of a wild experience. And those of you that aren't attending, say, a named high school per se, you can actually write in your own high school name in there, but you'll want to actually search by the, start typing the city first. That was what happened with my high school many, many years ago. So when I filled this out, I started with W because I went to Wichita High School Northwest. And then when you select the month, date, and year of beginning and ending of the high school experience, approximation is also fine. So if you're like me and that was a whole bunch of decades ago and I don't know exactly what day I started high school or day I finished high school, approximation is just fine. And then this information is required. Have you been convicted of a misdemeanor felony or other crime? And then have you ever been found responsible for a disciplinary violation? So again, these are required pieces of information and I would encourage you, as always, to be truthful in your filling out this form, because at the end, you will actually signify that. Moving through, I'm going kind of quick because I want to get through this to the good stuff. But this is actually important since we are talking about Module One, beginning your students in this way. So answering this prompt is required. Now, this is where it becomes a pre-test for those of us that are working with the Seed Program. We want to see where your student begins in regard to their answer to this question, because this is the impetus or one of the major driving questions or content pieces for SEED is what is the purpose of business in your own words? And then those students that do complete the program and want to receive concurrent credit, they'll be asked to do this again. In fact, they will, they will answer this question and the ones that we will see on the next one as part of their moral compass paper, those one of the two capstone projects that will be completed throughout the 12 modules of the course. And so they can either type it then or they can attach their response. And then these are optional as part of the application, but as I mentioned, these are also included in their moral compass paper. What does the word vocation mean to you? What are some examples of rules that you live by? That's one of the module projects. What is the mission statement of your life? Again, we'll be creating that as part of one of the modules. And so I would encourage you to encourage your students to take a shot at these. At this point in the application process, there is no wrong answer. And we would love to, our goal is to, at the end of the program, compare these answers that they begin with to the answers that they end with at the end of the course. So that gives us that pre and post data that we're so hungry for to prove the efficacy of this program and to prove the learning that happens in the heart and mind of your student.
Yeah, I would just add, John, especially the first question, what's the purpose of business? Foundational question for the whole Seed Program. As John said, you know, we're not going to reject an application due to any of these answers. We expect them all to be approved. Please don't coach the student by, you know, you've seen the Seed Program. Just let them answer the best they can. Again, this is really for us to be able to measure impact. So, you know, the closer we can come to what that student, you know, really thinks at that particular time, the more accurate we're going to be able to measure the impact of the Seed Program.
Thank you, Luke. Great points. And again, like, when is it your opportunity to just lay it all out there? There's no wrong answers here. We want to see where they stand when they begin, right? So then review your submission and then click the red button to submit your application. That red button is over here. And away they go. They verify all of this is true and correct. And once that happens, an email comes to Luke and I and we start compiling lists of students that are currently enrolled in SEED and we celebrate and think about and pray about them. And then if you are leading students through, what would be awesome is if you would then send me an email, especially if you have multiples with a roster, so that we can then triangulate those people together so that we know that, say, if you're leading them through, we know they're with you. And that's important because to get concurrent credit with Catholic University for the Seed Program, for their work, they have to be led by a SEED-certified facilitator. So that's, that's important so that, you know, that's one of the many, like, not many. One of the three stipulations for receiving concurrent credit is that you have to be led by a SEED-certified facilitator. And we have just completed our first one of those trainings. So we're very excited about that and that class of 2020. That ends that segment of the session. Pause for questions, thoughts, reflections before we move into the next piece. Sip my delicious tea. It's a custom blend, y'all. I highly recommend it. Okay. Then our friends that have done this before, this will only be something that happens if you are leading multiple groups in succession through the Seed Curriculum, the Seed Course. In Module 12, as part of the second block, they do this thing called a Wise Send-Off. And essentially, that is a letter that they write to the next group of SEED students. Okay, and it's, it is in a sealed envelope. The idea is that they have learned and grown so much as a result of the Seed Program that they have wisdom to offer to that next group of SEED students that are coming in in Module One. So I'll drop the link to Module 12. Hopefully, all of you have access and links to the entire set of materials. But this is Module 12. We're not going to get into it today. But since we are talking about Module One, our vision is on that very first session, that first encounter that a student has with SEED, they complete the application and if possible, they receive this Wise Send-Off Letter from a student that went through before. There's some stipulations on trying to make sure that that remains anonymous, that the student that writes it knows that you're not going to peek in there and see what they said. There's a lot of trust involved with the process. And so just some food for thought there as you're preparing to lead students through Module One. And again, this might be brand new. It's mostly brand new to all of you. So this might not happen until this time again, next semester or next year, but that's what we're trying to create. Now, still in Module Zero, we want to talk today about this thing we call the Culture of Vocation. And let me drop the link in here for you as well, because this is the principles, the five principles that SEED has been built upon. This, this thing we call the Culture of Vocation. I'm just going to share my screen here. So you can see. Creating a culture of vocation. And essentially, it is these five principles that have evolved. And with Luke here and available, I would ask him to share with us about it. But let me just really quick, when I was beginning to work with the Seed Materials, I grabbed my copy of the book Unrepeatable. And as soon as I got to Chapter Five, I was like, whoa, this is powerful. And Chapter Five of Unrepeatable talks about this culture of vocation and these principles. And this, for me, on a very personal note, has become a framework for understanding human connection, for understanding human flourishing, for understanding how to create situations where my child and my wife and my family can live up to our vocation. It's very, very powerful. And thus, we've, we've embedded it as the ground, the foundational groundwork of the entire course. So Luke, talk to us a little bit about this, if you would, please.
Sure, John. I'll say a few words. So starting at the top right with creativity. I'm going to work down because creativity, wonder, and incarnation are corresponding things to three of the major things that we think are contributing to a culture that makes discerning vocation more difficult. So one of those things is a culture of conformity. We live in a culture of conformity to do and say the quote, "right" things. And if you don't do that, bad things happen. An antidote to that, to that culture of conformity is creativity. And nobody's more creative than a saint. You know, nobody is more wonderfully unique and creative in the way that they love than a saint. So that is a foundational value of the Seed Program. That attentiveness to the uniqueness of each person and of each student. So everything that we've designed in the Seed Program is meant to be tailored to the unique personhood of the student, to be able to foster their creativity in the way that only they can. So we don't want them to have to conform to any kind of mold, any kind of educational mold. We want them to flourish as they were created to be. And everything that we've done, including the motivational code in Module Two, is designed to help them understand who they are better so that they can develop according to their unique design. Wonder is the antidote to a culture of calculation. Everything needs to be in an algorithm. Everything is calculable. So wonder is, you know, the foundation of all philosophy, frankly, the root of theology. I mean, something that leads to creativity when we can look up at the sky, we can look at our fellow human and wonder about them. And clearly, key to any kind of entrepreneurial spirit is to be able to look around at the world and to wonder about it and to be able to use that as an impetus to create something of value. Then at the bottom, incarnation is the third core element. And that is an antidote to a culture of disincarnation, where everything is being disincarnated. Very much the antithesis of everything that we believe. Our faith is founded on the incarnation of Christ. So what, everything we've done is really ordered towards being incarnational. What does that mean? In-person instruction. We really don't want SEED to, you know, John and I could deliver the SEED Program from our offices at CUA if we really wanted to. We don't think that's optimal because of this particular principle. So we're developing physical things, things like journals, diaries, you know, the youth entrepreneurs activities. All of that is meant to be incarnational. Personal encounter, of course, we, you know, nobody is really transformed through through knowledge alone or learning alone unless there's been real personal contact, obviously with the Lord above all, and then mediated through you, through the teacher. So we believe that everything, this goes right into what we were saying about creativity and that personalization. Everything kind of happens in the context of that personal encounter. And then last, truth, truth-seeking language in particular. You know, I never see the word truth or true anything in conversations about business. And that's odd because, you know, truth has everything to do with business. You know, the world has a very utilitarian view of it. But we cannot, as Catholics that are creating value, that are entrepreneurs, that are in business. So when we talk about truth in business, we mean first and foremost, the truth about the human person, right? A good, adequate anthropology, which is the foundation of everything that SEED is built on. John Paul II spoke many times, especially in Redemptor Omnis, about we can't, we can't even begin to build a morality unless we have an adequate anthropology. Everything stems from that, not only understanding what a human person is, but who a human person is. So that's where the truth-seeking language comes from. Think of that in terms of the truth about what it means to be human and our capacity for God, which means we're going to be very different as entrepreneurs, as people in the world than people that don't believe in that ultimate end. So everything is sort of ordered towards that.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Luke. Before we move on from this, because it is so foundational, what are thoughts? Anything that you noticed, anything stand out to you that you'd be willing to share today? Shannon, yes?
Well, I was just going to say, I got the book Unrepeatable and I haven't started it yet because I also have Professor Widmer's book. And, you know, so I'm going between the two, trying to figure out what to read first ahead of my student. But I liked how Luke was talking about the culture and how what we're trying to do in SEED is something that's the antithesis of that, that is really the opposite in setting that up. And I think kids kind of get that when you set it up like that, because they see so much of the culture coming at them. So anyway, I'm sure reading Unrepeatable will enlighten me more as to how to bring that out. But I thought that was really good.
Thank you, Shannon. So she mentioned, so we actually reference a couple of books in the Seed Materials. Unrepeatable is one of them. And then also The Pope and the CEO from Professor Andreas Widmer. And it's also wonderful as a reference and standalone reference as well. But we actually have a couple of different resources that we will see from Professor Widmer. In fact, in this module, there are two videos that are of Professor Widmer for Module One. But so this is where, if you're looking for kind of the unifying theory, right, of SEED or unifying thread that runs throughout, anytime that you're searching for a question for your students, a way to prompt them where to engage, think about the culture of vocation. These five principles are a way to engage them, to get them to, to ask questions, to, to think on the fringe of what they might, the pathways that they already went down. I love how Luke talks about the algorithm, right? Everything in our lives is so algorithmic. Well, what's the opposite of an algorithm? It's a heuristic. A heuristic is basically a human being. It's a way of solving problems that haven't been solved before. So the framework of these five principles come in so handy. And I hope that you will see them throughout. We will, we will work with them throughout. And this is why we wanted to make sure that we touchstone on these elements today and in every one of these groundwork sessions. So now, moving into Module One. Does everyone have the link to the, all of the material? Because it would be awesome just to make sure that you have this. And that way, you are free to go in and out and wander around. And we did this on purpose. We created these on Google so that you could all access them. So that link that I just dropped in there is the whole works. It is the entire body of the Seed Curriculum/Material. Curriculum is such a tiny boxed-in word. I'm trying to not use it. But essentially, what I would hope for you to do is to click on that link and then go to Module One. Because we're going to begin in Module One and find in every module, there are some things that will always, always be there. One of them is the student prompt. So go to that link, find Module One, and then pull up the SEED Student Prompt, A Life Worth Living. This document and all of the student prompts are designed to be delivered to the student before beginning the module in earnest. So before we begin, we want to send this document or a copy of it to your students. And this is that personal encounter. This is beginning the personal encounter and engaging that sense of wonder. What we hope will happen is that they read it and click through to the links. So was it worth it? Like, right away, we begin with the question. We're going to talk a little bit about a life worth living, human dignity and time well spent. There's a lot of clues in this, the very header of this document. But we begin with a question that prompts quite literally the work that they'll be doing in Module One. Was it worth it? It is your life, this class, that game. Wait, so we've encountered, and I think what I'll do here is I will share with you my screen. So you can see, as I wander through here, pretending to be a student, this is in fact, exactly how it went for me, that game. So if I click on that, oh, it's a link to a blog post by this guy named Seth Godin. Anyone familiar with Seth Godin? I am. I like to read his blogs. He actually blogs about tacos quite a bit and he blogs daily. He's a serial entrepreneur. He's got a lot of things to say and actually is referenced in the Seed Course, Seed Materials quite frequently. But the idea is that the student is given a thread to pull, a path to take. Engaging that sense of wonder, that game, those things you have to do tomorrow. You should know upfront. And then there's a little explanation. Here's what these links are here for. The question is this, if you tracked all of the time you spent in the past 24 hours, was it worth it? We talked a little bit about Steve Jobs, God rest his soul, the former Apple CEO. And there's a link to a video of him giving the graduation speech at Stanford University. I believe it's in 2006. I believe it's in 2006. And there's the entire thing as well. So here's just the clip. And then here is the longer version. Okay, the idea being that they will have followed these paths before they begin the the block, the very first block of module one. So that especially those of you that are helping self-directed students, whether like homeschool is a word that we can use or unschooling, I like self-directed better, that this is a great way to begin. Right? So they've done the application. You can send a module one student prompt. And then there's a note in here about David Cassidy's last words. One of the things we would like to point out as we move through these is that we've created these documents on Google with the permissions that anyone can comment on them. And what we'd like to do is use your knowledge base to grow it, but also to make sure that as things change on the internets, as links get taken down, as articles get taken down. If you find something that is broken, please tell us. And it's not, you don't even have to email us, you just highlight that and click the wonderful little comment button here. Boom. And that will come directly to Luke and I and we'll address it and take a look at it. Because two weeks ago, this link was broken. And it, a wonderful teacher from Frasadi High School in Spring, Texas, found that it was broken and helped us fix it. So when was the last time you looked in the mirror and asked yourself the question that Steve Jobs posed? If today was your, were the last day of my life, would I want to do what I am about to do today? So the idea here is that the student is already engaging. And then each time that they that they do so, they're enriching themselves and deepening the learning. They're having that that personal encounter. If you don't ask this question, the direction of your life will be decided for you. So this is an article that they can go and read, The Paradox of Choice. We would also encourage you to be a student yourself, to take the journey with them, scour through this. And there's the thing about entrepreneurship, it is not necessarily so much as individual activities that we do. It is a journey that we take. And so when we take the journey, it's nice to have people with us, people that that care about us, that love us. And so think about that as you're getting ready to share this with your student. Dig into these, right? As you read through the articles, begin asking yourself, what is worth wanting? You only get to worship at one of five altars. And so here we are, Professor Andreas Vidmer, front and center, seven minute video. So they will have already seen this video. Hopefully, they will have engaged with this content themselves and watched this video where Professor Vidmer challenges them, on what altar do you worship? Here's the mission and each prompt, there is a mission. And in this one in particular, it's talking broadly about one of the two capstone deliverables for the the entire course, the Odyssey Project. Okay, so right now you're in a time of transition and opportunity. So we were thinking about that 16, 17, 18 year old student. And we will, we're directing them, you will pick something you want to achieve or create over the next two years of your life and use this entire course to work on developing this plan. What is it that you want to do? And here we have another wonderful video, video recorded lecture from Professor Vidmer talking about the very specific thing, finding your moral compass, which is part of the moral compass paper is actually the other of the two capstone deliverables. So this video, you can watch it with them, but in our hope is that they have taken the time to watch it themselves. And that way, when they come into the module proper, they're they're prepared. They've at least done this groundwork and that will happen in every module, module one through 12. This is an element of of the work that they will do it when do do throughout the course. So when this course is over, you'll have the tools, self-awareness and plan for creating a life worth living. Each module has a project. And in particular, this module has a two-part project. One, they'll write a eulogy for themselves based on their ideal life. And there's some options of different ways that that can be done. They don't necessarily have to write a eulogy. And then the other thing, the other element of the deliverable project for this module is that they'll conduct an audit of how they spend their time. So in block one, the classroom discussion is driven by that video of Professor Vidmer, Finding Your Moral Compass. So hopefully they have watched it and you have watched it and you're prepared to lead a discussion, which is actually inside of the 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 lesson guide itself, there are several prompts for you. Let me switch over to that real quick. Now, those of you joining us, I want to make sure that we talk through the format of the lesson guide. Each lesson guide is formatted the same way where we have callouts for the Catholic social teachings that we'll cover. We will call out also the business values that are embedded in the content, the very specific key principles that we'll be talking about through the material. And then for you, we've just, we've really worked hard to try to help with reducing the transaction costs of delivering the material. And what do we mean by that is keeping it all really organized well so that it's right at your arms' reach? Kind of like a chef, right? Your your mise en place, your, it's all right there. You're ready to cook, ready to make something beautiful with your students. And so you'll see that you can go right to your module profiles, you can go to your student prompt, the catechism excerpt, and then Professor Vidmer's worship worship essay. And then we've taken a stab, a stab, that's German for taking a shot. We've taken a shot at a hypothesis of how long it might take to go through each block. Okay, now, the idea that a block is a core or is a classroom time or a session of class is not really the best way to mark it. In fact, and a module is not necessarily a week. Many of the modules of the seed course take, will take longer than that. Some of them will take less. And so just the idea of time, the amount of time it will take, it's very fluid and we did that on purpose, but we also felt like we owed it to you, the facilitator, to at least give you a, I don't know, maybe 20 minutes. But if you take longer, that's wonderful because that it means that you're engaging your students. So in this particular module, we've got block one, we're discussing. And then in block two, we also, we're talking about the profile that's involved, that's included. And then beginning the project, part one, then we'll have block three, which is a discussion of the worship essay and also video. And then the part two of the project of life examination. And then block four is actually a supplemental block. So that means that you don't necessarily have to do it, but it it is, it's good stuff and we encourage you to do so. And in fact, when we talk about concurrent credit for the seed course through Catholic University of America, we want to make sure that not only have they been led through by a facilitator that has been through training, but they have done all 12 modules and all of the essential blocks. Those would be basically the non-supplemental blocks of the course so that they can then receive credit. So we want to make sure that they go through all of it. This course, by the way, is mapped by and created with this in mind of a course that already exists at Catholic University. It is called Vocation 118. It's the vocation of business. And so in that course, what we did was we took the bones of it and we made it into the seed program. We took some pieces out of it, we added some pieces to it and voila, you get the seed program. So in back to the lesson guide, you'll see every time you pull up a lesson guide, there's a teacher overview. This is our message to you. What is this about? So in this one, you'll see there's a reminder to keep in mind that the principles of a culture of vocation, right? And this module, students will complete a two-part project. And we have for you, every one of these blocks has an essential question. And one of the other things as far as reducing your transaction costs as a facilitator and keeping everything, you know, right at hand, we've given you some tips on what you need to think about before beginning. So be prepared to hand out journals to each student. Now, that doesn't mean that you have to use paper journals. In fact, maybe you want to do this electronically. That's I, that's the idea, though, of your student will reflect. In fact, we would like for them to reflect on every student prompt. How did that feel? What did you think? What what is the student prompt? What is the prompt about? What are you about to do? That way they can get into the habit of reflection, of incarnating their own thoughts in paper or electronically so that they're engaging with their own thoughts. And a reminder here, again, if you have sealed letters written in module 12, block two, be sure to hand those out. If possible, deliver the student prompt to the students prior to the first session. We know that can be challenging, of course, with with students that are coming to an in-person class in a traditional classroom. That might be hard to do, but I think you're up for the challenge. And then this one is really interesting. Because we will be talking about eulogies, how cool would it be to maybe have your first session at a cemetery? Or a mausoleum? Or in a catacombs or a crypt? Those things are around and they're very hallowed, right? It might create that sense of wonder, that personal encounter and start us to thinking about the truth, that's for sure. So just, you know, a challenge for you. Now, this is important, right? Do you want to show the video during class or what your time with your student? Do you want to show them that entire video? Do you want to require them to watch it beforehand? So these are important things that we've just tried to to suss out for you. And then if possible, and we're working on this, we have some examples. We're redacting all of the personal information out of them so that you can have examples of the moral compass papers of what good looks like. So we'll be creating those very soon and sharing them as well onto the Google Drives so that you have access to them. And then be prepared to share with students what the deadlines are, you know, all of the normal course, classroom management stuff. And be ready to take them through that application process. And then decide how you want to handle the journaling. Okay, so let me take a second and just scroll down. We'll come back to this, this classroom discussion, and it has the prompts in there for you. But at the bottom of every lesson guide, we have for you some things. Module deliverables so that you can keep track of, okay, what, what is it that they owe us? Or what do they owe you? They owe you a journal entry about the prompt. They owe you their ideal life eulogy. They owe you their life examination. And then at the very end, a reflection on the module itself and the project and how they created it. And then to to help you with the shortcuts, we've created a resource list at the bottom of every module so that you can have at hand and very quickly whatever whatever you need that we've incorporated. And then this is also where, as we grow this, we'll add more to it, but we would love to get your suggestions as well. So then back up here. Now, I'm going to stop sharing because I have a plane. Remember, we talked about, we want this to be a work session. Okay, so how many of you? And we're getting into block two here. There are some profiles about two, two people that passed away. In block two, the profile is about the Blessed Frasadi and then a gentleman by the name, with the last name Burt. And it highlights their lives and the differences of them with the idea that we've got an example of of these lives that were lived. And then with the idea that we're going to start thinking about our lives as students and how we have lived them intentionally and thinking about how how we would eulogize ourselves from our ideal life. So each student in block two is encouraged to, we'll work through the the profiles of Frasadi and Burt. But then there's a link to the catechism. And what we chose is, and you can see it there, is man's capacity for God. Now, this is a place where we're not completely satisfied with this as being the tie to Catholic social teaching in here. There's way more available. There has to be. So what are your thoughts? You can either share them in the chat or you can you can put it on the notes. What do you think about other ways that we could use the Gospels or the Old Testament or examples from the New Testament, letters from the apostles? What are your thoughts on tying in this idea of an intentional life? A life well-lived, a holy life? And you'll see there are always essential questions. On your deathbed, what life would give you the most peace to have lived? So what comes to mind for you? What are some examples that we could use?
Well, this is not somebody that everybody knows, but actually, just this morning, we lost a very dear friend to COVID. And I I just sat down with my junior a few days ago to show him, okay, let's start the application process to seed and here's the questions I want. And, you know, I made a little Google Classroom and they're due on Thursday. And then I showed him the, one of, part of the first project is going to be writing a eulogy. And he was like, well, what's a eulogy? And I told him. And then low and behold, his, one of his very close friends, his dad died this morning. So I think we're going to be in a really wild way reflecting on this firsthand over the next few weeks as we walk with our friends and grieve with them. But the fellow who died, Jim, our friend, in their Christmas card, he has his arms outstretched and all the kids are in front smiling and he's in like a ta-da kind of posture because that's just how he lived. I mean, he just was always about bringing Jesus to everyone. And everything about him was relational and yeah, I mean, he just had a real passion for loving just everybody. So I think, I don't know, it'll be interesting to see how my son reflects on this in light of the loss of of Jim, of Mr. Mahomes. So, yeah, yeah, I don't know. I, I, I mean, I see how there's so many people in scripture we can draw out, but I think I'm going to just let the Holy Spirit just unpack what we're living over the next week and take this away because Jim was, I mean, surely he's with the Lord or right on his way there. Literally went to the hospital last night and died this morning. So very like, kind of, we're in one of those modes right now. But I felt like I'm going to get on tonight and learn more about this. And I think God's going to really use it with me, too.
That's beautiful. And thank you for sharing. That's, it takes a great deal of courage to 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 share that with all of us. And what I noticed was that your son didn't even know what a eulogy was, right? And now he's getting a very, very up close and personal look at this. And I'm sure that would make an enormous impact on anyone. And I'm excited to see what comes of it as well. So here's a question. How many of you have ever written a eulogy? For anyone? I haven't. Something we just recently added to to the material is an article from the Wall Street Journal where the person who writes obituaries for the Wall Street Journal as their profession is has gone through the process of writing his own obituary and what that was like. And I think that's exactly what we want to happen as as a result of block two for part one of the module project is that you you take a moment and you imagine that you have passed. Ah, okay. LC. Would you be willing to share? Ah, it's you. Okay. Excellent. I'm, I'm getting all of these, I'm figuring out who's who in there. So Liz, is it Liz? Do you go by Liz? And I don't know, sometimes we don't have everyone's audio.
John, it's Leece.
Leece, share with us, what's, what was that like? Eulogizing your beloved parents?
It was difficult to do, but it was definitely a fruitful experience. It helped me, you know, when I was in a very emotional, sad state to, you know, really reflect with a lot of gratitude and yeah, just having a lot of great memories and sometimes not so good memories come to mind. And And um. I think people enjoyed listening to it. Um, that was the feedback I got. So it was definitely a good experience overall.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. And I I guess one question I have is it probably. It took some time to do, right? It didn't.
Yes.
It wasn't just a a quick, you drafted and it's done type of thing?
No.
And I and I'm sure that in that, at that stage of life, having just lost your parents. It it probably made it even more um. I guess beautiful, uh, but also challenging to do. Now here, and and thank you, Leece, for for sharing that. Um, what we what we encourage all of you to do. So that as you're facilitating this for your learners is to do this for yourself. Go through this process and take time to to be a student of the seed program. And go with them. I would challenge all of you this week to sit down and follow the instructions for module one and create your ideal life eulogy. It's that much more real. The truth-seeking dialogue that you will have with your learners will be that much more authentic and incarnate. It will be beautiful and it immediately creates this sense of wonder of what what will happen. The other thing is that once it's created and it's shared between the two of you. You have this example that you can share. It's a it's a stake in the ground that says. I'm with you. I'm I'm taking this journey with you. Here's what I wrote for me. Now can I see what you wrote for you? And that that give and take, that sense of vulnerability will open up worlds for your students. It's a great pedagogical tool to be a student. Along with your students. So we've got some prompts in there to to help you use. Uh, take a moment to envision your best self. Not an abstract version, but the one who has fulfilled the dreams and desires that you have right now. So what are those dreams? If you're like me, about 10 years ago, you were really kind of lax in your dreams. You really didn't have any. And so hopefully you have some. And and if you don't, this is a great opportunity to create those. And write this from the perspective of after the fact. Imagine that you've died at the age of eighty-seven. Now eighty-seven, that's just a a number. Um, I guess Moses said that you'll live till seventy, eighty, if you're strong. And that you fulfilled those dreams, all of them. And then that someone you love is giving this eulogy. So the voice of it should not be necessarily your voice. That might help your student to select someone that you love, that you're going to write this in their voice. Now, as writers, that's a wonderful writing challenge. And it might be a little bit much, but the idea is that it's not necessarily them eulogizing themselves, even though that's truly what's happening. It's the voice of someone that they they love that loves them, that is that is eulogizing them. And it should include major relationships, major accomplishments and the values that you live by there. The values that you've lived by. And so right now. What they're doing, and this is a very entrepreneurial thing to say, is that they're putting a stake in the ground. They are signifying where they have begun. They are. They're creating. This is the incarnation piece. So before we move on to that that next part of the project in block three. Thoughts? Questions? I'll check the notes. Ah, ooh. Thank you. Oh.
That was me.
Tell us more, Tice.
So I just thought of um, I don't know why I thought of this, but it came to mind the last lecture. I don't know if you've ever heard that last lecture by Randy Posh. It's actually um. So he was like a professor of computer science and um. He's not necessarily Catholic or Christian, but he gives this last lecture, knowing that he has pancreatic cancer. And he's basically going to die. It's his last.
Okay.
It's his last lecture. And so even though it's not a eulogy or anything like that, but it it might be worth showing some clips from that last lecture. Because he does talk about, you know, what's important in life, looking at it from someone who's basically going to die. He's a college professor. Um, so I don't know, that that came to mind.
Thank you. Yeah. Actually, I remember it was a couple of years ago now, but that was really making the viral rounds. That was.
Yes. And there's also a book, I think, that they wrote, or I don't know if he wrote from. I don't know what happened, but from that lecture, from that last lecture.
Wonderful. And then tell us more, the the exercises of Saint Ignatius.
So the only other thing that I thought of was because when you were talking about eulogizing in the spiritual exercises of Saint Ignatius. When you're going to make a discernment about. One of the things that Saint Ignatius suggests in the spiritual exercise, if you have to make a decision or you have to make a life decision, actually. Is what would you have at the end of your life, looking back? What is it that you would have wanted to do? And so, I don't know, it just came to mind. I don't know if there's something in the spiritual exercise that you could quote or something like that in that section, but it just came to mind.
That's perfect and wonderful. Thank you. This is exactly what I had in mind. And uh, so now the anonymous narwhal is adding, thank you, anonymous narwhal for adding whoever you are. That's wonderful. Um, one of the things that that Willie Quado and I were talking about is um Enrique Shaw. And this, you know, there has to be, and I had, I haven't taken the time to go out and search it out. But there has to be a eulogy of Enrique Shaw out there. Uh, that would be a wonderful example. I I mean, I'm just, I'm imagining that it was probably an amazing um, obituary slash eulogy for this soon-to-be saint. So that, these are great. Thank you so much. And what a great segue as well, because in module one. Once we finish the eulogies, right? The next piece of that is this life examination. Are you on track to live your ideal life? So we've put a stake in the ground about this is the life that we want to lead. Now it's like, okay, how are we doing on that? In fact, one of my favorite questions to ask anybody in a personal encounter is, how's that going? And then I sit and I wait and I listen. How's that going? And so on purpose, for block three of module one, we spend time. First of all, with Professor Vidmer. And this wonderful essay that he wrote. In fact, there's an essay and then there's a video. The video is the seven minutes. It's very um, if you watch it, it's very intimate. Like he's like really close to the camera when he's talking to it. I think it's wonderful because he's very passionate about this. This is, this is important uh, to him, very important to Professor Vidmer, his vocation to to share these ideas. But essentially. He's talking about this idea that he calls worship. Okay? And in here, he he talks about the five things that you can wor- worship. Okay? And we put them in here in the prompts that you can use for the second part of the project where they do this life examination. So you ask students, take some time to audit how you've spent your time over the past week. Determine the three biggest activities by time spent. Using the five desires from what do you worship? Which desires would your time say you value the most? And the five are pleasure, power, honor, money, God. Now. Cut to the chase. God is the ideal. The thing that we want to worship, the thing that invests back in us, that that loves us of the five, it's just God. But where are we on those five altars? Which ones do we worship the most? Which ones are we at the most? And so this is great, because if you challenge, and we we do this actually later in the course. To challenge them to to keep track of the things that they've done. But in this case, we're looking back. We have the benefit of hindsight. So we're looking back at the last week and taking stock of what we've done. And the idea is that then, once we have that inventory, we write down, you know, our accomplishments. Uh, they don't have to be huge, as it says, right? Write down the biggest accomplishments for your life so far. And they can be small, personal. They don't have to be huge. Write down your major relationships, your friendships, family relations. What have you done for each other? How have you served these people? And that will be a direct reflection of who you worship. And whether you're on track or not to live this ideal life that we have just finished eulogizing. Hi, Carol. Thanks for joining us. We're glad you're here.
You, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, wonderful. Yeah, I got the time zone wrong and then I couldn't find the link, so I apologize. I'm really happy. Thank you.
You're forgiven and it happens. And this is the first one of these, so there's bound to be hiccups. We're just glad you're here. So we are uh, we're looking at the the mod- first module and we're we're sharing notes. So one other thing I'll I'll share with you really quick is that we've got a shared note document here. Shoot. Where we're all sharing uh, notes from today. And I just want you to be involved in that as well. I I think it's interesting how Zoom punishes latecomers by not allowing them to see the chat. Oh, my gosh. Um, but we've got already some great notes in there. And we're talking about now, so we're we're in module one and the project deliverable is two parts. They have a ideal life eulogy and an ideal life eulogy and then a life examination. And we were just finishing up talking about the life examination. Any thoughts on that? Has anyone done anything like this? Um, is there any references that we can include to saints? Or to the uh, the catechism or to the Old or New Testament? Or to lives of saints or quotes by saints? This is one of the fruits of these groundwork sessions is that we we want to improve the material. This isn't just Luke and I sharing with you. We want to hear from you. Because you'll be the ones that will be bringing this material to life. So block four of module one is supplemental and it's marked that way. So if it's not marked supplemental, it's essential. It's just one of those things. Um, and it, but this one is very highly encouraged as a a piece that is definitely worth your time. Um, especially if you've got time to go through these things. This is a a link out to an article called Think Like An Entrepreneur. And it's, I think it's fun to me. I've been working with high school teachers and high school students for the last 12 years of my life to work on entrepreneurship education. And this article was written by the now CEO of the Network for Teaching Entrepreneurship. And the program that I began my entrepreneurship education career in was a uh, an affiliate of what they call Nifty, the Network for Teaching Entrepreneurship. And it was started by a guy named Steve Mariotti, who's since retired. And this gentleman took it over and he's got this great article uh, in Entrepreneur Magazine on online. Um, Think Like An Entrepreneur. And I see lots of curses on there, which means you're looking at it. And so one of the things I like about this is that it has kind of these characteristics of what it means to be an entrepreneur. And it's not um. It's something that I've encountered in the last 12 years. This this definition of what is an entrepreneur. And I'll go ahead and say it. It has nothing to do with owning a business. Entrepreneurship has nothing to do with starting a business. That is just something that entrepreneurs do. They do many things. This definition of entrepreneurship, I think, has been minimized and co-opted by the Internal Revenue Service. Because they need to be able to define revenue generating activity. And so an entrepreneur, business owner is what we've all accepted. It's the IRS's definition. I think that's, it's not untrue. But it doesn't get all of it. In fact, that's why we have a Catholic social teaching-informed entrepreneurship education course for students. Because this idea of business startup or inventor is insufficient. And one of the things that I've noticed in my time in entrepreneurship education is that we've moved to the entrepreneurial mindset of which the author of this article, Sean Osborne, talks about. And we're getting close. We would say that this is the vocation. This is how we are created to be. In fact, the entrepreneur is all of us. All of us have in us, especially in a flourishing, holy life. This idea of creating value for others by investing our scarce resources. And and essentially, from an economic point of view, that's what entrepreneurship is. Um, the Austrian School of Economics would say, we're all entrepreneurs. All human beings are born to be entrepreneurs. So what I like about this is it kind of gives you some direct and specific pieces of the entrepreneurial mindset. Nifty is very, very deliberate about opportunity recognition. They actually have uh, five, it used to be six. They've coordinated it down to five categories of opportunity recognition. So this kind of um, I always think of the entrepreneur as this person who's standing around, you know, looking in the horizon, looking for opportunity, ways to solve problems, ways to help other people. Opportunity recognition isn't always in the horizon. Sometimes it's down around your feet. It's cluttering up where you're trying to walk. This idea of comfort with risk, and and we specifically say ambiguity. Hur- heuristic problem solving requires that we don't know the answer yet. So we have to have creativity, which is part of our five, five values, right? Creativity, innovation. Uh, the definition of innovation is also quite nebulous and has been kind of co-opted as well. Uh, innovation is about making it better. But not just necessarily different. Oriented to the future. Now, this is also a characteristic of leadership, right? That you have a vision. In fact, the Human Action Model says that we're all dissatisfied. We won't do anything about it unless we have a vision of a better state that we believe will work. You have to be flexible and adaptable, initiative and self-direction. I think I think we'll see a lot of that coming through, especially in the self-directed students. Why I love that hyphenated word, self-directed. Critical thinking and problem solving. I would say my favorite definition of entrepreneurship is solving problems for profit. And the caveat there is that profit is not measured specifically and completely in costs, uh, price minus cost. It has very little to do with revenue, because money is just something that you give to other people to buy their time and attention. Critical thinking and problem solving, and then communication and collaboration. And the goal there with using that article is we're stepping out into kind of the secular world a little bit. We're stepping out into this idea of entrepreneurship from a uh, the the business world's point of view. And it is very poignant, right? And so we have a classroom discussion based on it. Talking about the entrepreneurial mindset. And it's a, would be a great way if you have time to round out the module that you've spent this time with your students. And then at some point, they bring to you their deliverables. They they hand you their eulogy and their time audit. And it's up to you how you grade that. Um, we we love that they do it and we would encourage you to encourage and create a a feedback mechanism. Entrepreneurs rarely ever get it right the first time. Like ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, they get it wrong. And that's what's so important about incarnation, going from zero to one. But then getting from one to two requires iteration. It requires going again. Based on feedback, what an opportunity for you to have truth-seeking dialogue with your students. When they hand you this project and you look over it with and offer them the dignity of of their humanity to to lovingly look at what they've created and then talk about it. And give them an opportunity to maybe improve it, do it again, try again. In fact, that's a huge part of what entrepreneurship really is about. Innovation comes from iteration. So however that's possible for you, some of us, uh, some of you might not have the freedom to do that. Of course, time is always a factor. But you might even consider, if you're giving them grades, make it almost impossible to get a hundred percent, to get it perfect that first time and do that throughout the course. It's the idea that we want them to create and then improve. So there, there's that part of it. And right then and there, we have moved our way through module one uh, with a little bit of module zero and a little bit of module 12. So here we are rounding out module one. Help us, share. What are your thoughts? What are you thinking? When you think about this, are you, you're probably have. When you think about this, are you, you're probably have someone very specific in mind. How are they gonna do? Share with us, please. We'd love to hear your thoughts.
I'm coordinating the homeschoolers in my area. And I propose this to them. And I have about 12 teens that are interested.
Great.
And we're just trying to determine how frequently to meet. I recall from the previous facilitator training, you know, we kind of want the program to breathe. So I'm just wondering. I guess every module would vary with how long, are all the blocks about 20 minutes in length? Is that the plan?
Um, that's a rough, a rough estimate, Carol, but a great question. In, in fact. The answer to every question is always, it depends. Um, but it depends a lot on how much time you've actually got, like not just for the sessions themselves, but like. How many times you get together and over how many, you know, whatever duration of time. That might be one way to think about it.
So would you encourage, we focus on a module for a couple of weeks? Or would it be a module a week, or?
Certainly, like, for example, module one. Um, you, you could certainly do four, four sessions. Of, say, if you're getting together for 20 minutes or 40 minutes, or however many minutes you get together. Um, I would, I would let it breathe, right? Because you, you might have to start from before the starting line, right? Like you might have this situation where students are like, what's a eulogy? So then you've got to go back and you've probably experienced that.
Okay.
And you might even, especially if you have the freedom of, of time. You might even like. Make it a question mark as to like, well, let's see how this goes. Right? And module one is great for that as well. Um, let's see how it goes, just have this discussion about these materials. And try to get them to do this thing, like the eulogy, right? Um, and then. Especially if, um, you know, you feel. Like they might want to share their eulogies. Uh, with, with their peers, like that's another piece of the seed program where we envision. Uh, getting feedback from their peers. So I, you know, maybe you put them, they go away, they write their eulogies, they come back. Maybe a day or a week later, however long. And you put them in small groups where they, they work together and share what they wrote. And talk about it, and you know, how did that feel? And what, what does that make you think about, that sort of thing?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. It's a great question. One thing's for sure, there is no shortage of materials in here, like just the resources alone. Um, you know. Andreas's videos, 33 minutes, seven minutes. For the two videos, man's capacity for God, the catechism excerpt is probably a thousand words. Think Like An Entrepreneur is probably in the neighborhood of 800 words. So just getting through. The materials themselves and, and I, I came out of my mouth and now I don't like what I said, that getting through the materials, engaging with the materials, so. That. That might take some time.
So I'm excited about this program. Do you encourage us to do? Everything? I know you allow flexibility in everything. Is it best to do at all, or just pick key things we want to focus on?
There it is again, it depends. Um, that's actually the license plate to my car, because, but the. People can say it depends if they give you an answer after the fact. I would encourage you to think about. And respond to, you know, you're an entrepreneur in this, right? So. The, you're gonna interject this. Content. And you have an idea of what you, what you think will happen, right? So you have this hypothesis. And then. You have to leave open for what, what will actually happen. For, for those students that, especially with you, having been through the facilitator training. You have the option of, if a student wants to receive concurrent credit, then they can do that with you. So you might, um, and I know this is like bifurcating all of your time. But the idea that you have that option. Would be great for maybe one of the many students that you serve or a handful of them, that you might have a separate cohort that is really digging deeper. Into all of the content and going through all of it. That, the 12 of them might not all want to do that, so. Um, it, it really does depend on like how the, the structure of your time together and how long you're together and. Where they're all at and how they respond.
Okay.
But I would encourage, um. You know, certainly modules one, module two, and as we mentioned, um, it, that one, you've got to let the flowers grow on that deal. It, module two is like wonderful if you've got two weeks to go through it. Um, module six, and then, um, module nine. Tyce, yes, great question. We have a form where the, once the students want to submit their materials, it's actually a Google form, they just upload their moral compass paper in a video of their. Um, Odyssey project, so. I can share that with you for sure. Great question. She asked, are the deliverables sent to CUA? They're actually sent to us. Luke and I, which is wonderful. We'd love to read that stuff. Yes. The entrepreneur in old French was the one who undertakes, and that meant like undertaking the risk. Undertaking the organization. And. I love this, the etymology of most words, but entrepreneur is one of my favorites. Uh, the person who gets credit for saying entrepreneurship first or publishing. The word entrepreneurship is Jean Baptiste Say, but in fact. He was the second. Um, it was actually a French Irishman. 70 years earlier, wrote about the entrepreneur. Uh, in a very obscure little piece, so that's a fun one. Uh, the, the history of the word entrepreneur. That's great. Lisa, thank you. Okay, friends. Who would like to have? The last word, as we're about to finish up the session, we've got about five minutes left. We do this thing at the Seoka Center for Principal Entrepreneurship that I absolutely love. Whenever we're finishing a meeting or a work session or anything. Uh, we, we have what's called the last word. And so. I would love to offer to any of you. The last word. Because you've heard a lot from me.
Uh, John, I have a question.
Sure.
Um. Are we supposed to? Guide the students in any way if they, for example. Choose, um. One of the five? Or are we just letting them? Experience what they're thinking? For example, um, if their goal is to. You know, make as much money in life as possible, and their eulogy matches that. Um, is, is that the exercise and we're not really commenting on, on the. You know, problems that may be associated with that?
Hmm. Well, that's a wonderful question. Um, anybody else have any thoughts on that? I do have my thoughts, but.
I mean, if I were to answer my own question, um. Is it about them? Growing more through the different modules so that hopefully they'll. Come to realize that life is more. Than about just making a profit? And financial security?
The answer is yes.
Okay.
And. As I, as we're growing, you know, in our relationship. Um, and what I know about you and our communications. The person, the students that we're talking about, you, you love them deeply. And, uh, what a great opportunity to discuss, and. What I think you'll find is that if they have been through, for example, the worship essay. And watched Professor Vidmer's video. Um, you'll have, it won't just be you saying, hey, uh, maybe we shouldn't worship at the altar of money so much. You'll actually have that kind of that third party reference where you can be like. Interesting, in the video we watched, there was this piece. Uh, what do you think about that? And ultimately, they're drawing them into that truth-seeking dialogue. Around, okay, is that really what, what we're all about? And then to answer your, your question, absolutely. As we move through the rest of the materials. Then there will be more and more pressure and more and more examples and work. Being done to nudge them in the direction of a much more holy. Um, you know, intentional life that they leave, leave, so, so yes, but. You know, wonderful, wonderful opportunity where your students are kind of giving you a view into their. Their view of themselves and what their goals are, right? Um, I would just say, go gently. With them, and if you do have the time, like for example, Tyce. She, you know, she might have lots and lots of students, so that might not have the opportunity to have these engagements with every. Student, um, but what a wonderful, uh, rich experience if you can. But pedagogically, I would say. Use the material and make it not necessarily a, you're telling them what to do. It's like, well, the material suggested this other way. What do we think about that? So.
Okay, right, good, thank you.
You bet. I'm always scapegoating, uh, the material. I'm like, well. I don't think you're, it's not wrong, however, this is what we learned, or this is what the thing said, so. I love the ability to do that. Wonderful question. Thank you all so much. We are. Rounding up the time, it was a wonderful session for me. Thank you for coming. This was the first ever groundwork session. And so. We will continue to offer these every month on the first Tuesday of the month. And we will get better. These will be, get, get better. Module one is pretty cut and dried, pretty straightforward as far as what the project is and how to go forward. We, uh, we are here to support you in your efforts, so John Bakura, and very easy to email me, j o n at seedprogram.com. And we are happy that you're here with us. And what, um, what I guess we would encourage you to do is to. Take the journey with your students. And a lot of you, I know that means that there are lots of them. Um, but as much as possible, we believe in the power of the, the material. And the experience and the effect that it will have on you, just as much as we believe it will. Make a very wonderful and fruitful impact on your students, so. Take the journey. We are all students here. Thank you so much for your input during this session. We have recorded them and I will send an email tomorrow or very soon, uh, that will. Help you access these videos and others, and we hope to see you again. So thank you all very much. Have a wonderful and happy new year.
Hey, John.
Yeah.
Um, Thea, Thea, I'm not sure if I'm saying the name right. Um, she, she asked a great question, if you could. Um, address that.
Do they iterate this eulogy at the end of the course? I hope so. That's a great idea, and it fits with, uh, with what we, we hope to create, so. Absolutely, and it is part of their Odyssey project for sure. So Tyce, I definitely, I would say yes.
Yeah, I think it might be worth doing. I, I just thought of that when, when, um, I, I don't know her name, LCA.
Oh, Lisa.
Lisa.
Um, was asking about that, um, because, you know, it may change after this course.
I hope so.
Right, exactly.
Right? I hope so.
So.
Our work.
You know?
Yeah, great thought, great thought.
Thank you, thank you, John and Luke and everyone.
Our pleasure. God bless, and we'll see you next time.